All right, we're going to go ahead and call our city commission meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so good to see a packed house here tonight, so we must have some fun agenda items to get through. All right, Al, roll call.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Here.
Brunick. Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
All right, you have before you to approve the minutes of the work session of June 28, 2021, and the regular meeting of June 28, 2021. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Seeing none, any comments from the public? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? And any abstaining? All right, approval of minutes. You have in your commission packet a schedule of bills. What's your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public like to make a comment on the bills? Al, roll call.
Aye.
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 Schramm.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. We do have two proclamations on the agenda tonight. We'll start with the first one. It's a proclamation for a Purple Heart City. Whereas the city of Yankton has great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces, and whereas the city of Yankton has a large, highly decorated, active-duty and veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chartered by an act of Congress, is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the city of Yankton appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made defending our freedoms and believe it is important, and it is important, that we acknowledge them for their immense courage and unselfish service to their nation. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Moser, Mayor of the city of Yankton, do hereby proclaim the city of Yankton as a Purple Heart community and engage and encourage the citizens and residents of Yankton to show their appreciation for the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to recognize their valor, and to show them the honor and support they have so greatly earned. Please help me give a round of applause, and I'd like to invite Ken Ten Houston and his group forward, please. All right, thank you again for your service. My dad actually served in the military, so they've always had a special place in my heart. And what an awesome honor to have all of you here tonight and to get signs for us. It's our pleasure to recognize Yankton as a Purple Heart community. You all are tugging at my heartstrings tonight, so. But City Manager Leon told me if I don't get through the next one to hand off the plaque, and she'd be happy to read it. The reason it's so special to me is I look out at them. I have known the Chopper Johnson family almost my whole life, I think, in Yankton. I'm not from here, but Chopper and his family were one of the first people I met when I moved here, and my husband joined the fire department. I can remember being at both kids' graduation parties, and this family's always held a special place in my heart. So I'm glad that this was saved for when I got to be mayor, so we'll try to get through it, so bear with me. Steve Chopper Johnson Day proclamation. Whereas Chop was born in Yankton, South Dakota, on May 8, 1951, to Dr. Clark and Elizabeth Johnson, he was the middle child of a family of five. He attended Sacred Heart School through the eighth grade, at which time he attended YHS and graduated in 1969. Whereas Chop graduated from Dakota State College in Madison, South Dakota, in 1974 with an elementary special education degree, he was thrilled to return to Yankton. Whereas Marlene Crawford and Chop were married in August 1972, they had two children, Sarah and her husband Ted Horning in Watertown, South Dakota, and Kyler Johnson here in Yankton, and their two granddaughters, Isabella and Brooklyn, live in Watertown as well. Whereas when Chop moved back to Yankton, he joined the Elks and was a member until he died and became a volunteer fireman in August 1972, serving 35 years. He and his dear friend Myrtle started the Yankton Community Feast in 2002. This wonderful event serves a free Thanksgiving meal to hundreds of people each year the night before Thanksgiving. He also served on the Riverboat Days Committee in some form or another every year since it began in 1983. Whereas Chop absolutely loved Yankton and truly believed that everyone is to give back to the community in some form or another, he was a bear of a man who was able to get things done, help those who needed help, and do the right thing without ever calling attention to himself. Whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the many commendable accomplishments of Steve Chopper Johnson, now I therefore, Stephanie Mayor, Stephanie Moser, Mayor of Yankton, do hereby proclaim July 18, 2021, as Steve Chopper Johnson Day. In this great city of Yankton, and I join the Johnsons' loving family, their many friends, and the entire Yankton community to thank Steve Chopper Johnson for his contribution to the Yankton community. I know Chopper's... I see a lot of folks in Chopper shirts, so I would invite the folks to come forward. And then I don't know, Marlene, are we putting you on the mic to say a few words? No. Somebody's been elected, I'm sure, to talk on behalf of the... Randy Oliver, all right, they're all pointing at you. So we'll do the picture, and then Randy might ask if you'd go to the mic so that we do record these meetings, and it'd be good for folks to hear.
My name is Randy Oliver. I'm the president of the Chopper Johnson Foundation. I don't know why Marlene had me come up here and say something. I guess I'm the low-hanging fruit, so we can't thank the city of Yankton enough for giving this honor to Chopper. I was proud of Stephanie Moser for making it through without breaking down, and I'd be surprised if I make it myself, so. We try to help those in Yankton. We try to make the community better, just like Chopper did. We do everything we can to try to keep up the standards of what you guys have set. So we can't thank you enough. It's an honor, and thank you very much.
It's always a true honor and a privilege to recommend so many special people in our community and to have Chopper Johnson Day proclaimed on the same day that we dedicate a Purple Heart community. I think he'd be very, very honored. All right, with that, City Manager Leon, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
So you want me to follow Purple Heart veterans and Chop Johnson Day?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can even come close. I know I can't, but I can just do my part here. A little bit of sad news, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, the public from the city today. Chief Jason Foot put his service dog to rest, Aries, earlier today. So we have Sergeant Schindler here with us this evening. You know, Aries is a great addition to our department and helped keep our community safe along with Jason. Not just a member of the law enforcement family, but as pet lovers know, they get to be members of your own family, too. So we're all thinking of Jason and Jesse and the Foot family this evening, and the law enforcement family. They've chosen to privately recognize Aries, and so just a kind word or an extension of support, I'm sure, would be appreciated. So he was a good, good dog. Next order of business that I'd like to ask you all about is later on in your consent calendar, I'm asking about a work session on July 26 and/or August 9. I will need you to set a work session on August 9, but I'm looking for direction and feedback on July 26. If you'd like a work session that evening, my recommendation is that we would start tackling the budget that evening, although we won't be finished. We usually don't, the ink doesn't dry till 11:59 on July 31. But by the 26, for example, we would have the BBB done. That's something that we could talk about, as well as utility rates. Those are two bigger items we could talk about and get out of the way that evening. If you'd like to have a work session, say, at 6 o'clock, and talk through those items, and then if changes are necessary, we can do that because there are more contained funds in the budget, and then we could take on the remaining of the operating budget then on the 9. That was my thought, but these are your meetings, so you let me know what you would like to do.
Are we good with leaving the consent agenda as read tonight? Okay.
Okay, we'll plan for that, and we'll keep you posted. Soon you are going to receive a dashboard from the Huthers Family Aquatics Center. I told you we've been keeping track of zip codes and information about where people are coming from to swim and waterwalk and do all the things. And so we have some really good data. Hopefully that'll help drive decisions that Todd Larson and his staff are making on marketing and hopefully help us provide a better service for our community and for visitors to our community. So I'm planning to have Peyton Mueller, our intern, work on a little bit of a report to go along with that, and once that's complete, send that off to you electronically, and you can take a look at that, and we will be updating that periodically throughout the summer. I don't have anything else really to report on, but I'm happy to answer questions of the commission if you have them.
All right, it appears there are no questions from the commission, so we'll move on to the time and the place for public appearance, for anyone that would like to speak to the city commission on something not on the agenda. All right, seeing no movement, we will move on to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda item number one is consideration of memorandum 21-148 recommending approval for the application from the Yankton County 4H for a transient merchant license for August 6 through 7, 2021. And number two is setting the date of July 26 at 6:00 PM here in room 114 for our next work session for the Yankton City Commission. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second. All right, have a motion and second. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? All right, all those in favor of moving the motion of the consent agenda item, say aye. All those oppose nay? And anybody abstaining? Consent agenda items moved. Under old business, number one is a public hearing for the transfer of ownership in consideration of memorandum 21-149 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine for July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, from Anus Properties, Inc., doing business as Patriot Express, to Israel Mark Tako, doing business as Shapiro's Tacos at 100 East Fourth Street here in Yankton. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Mybomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 21-146 regarding a public hearing to consider ordinance 1053, an ordinance adopting provisions for administrative approval of Platts pursuant to South Dakota codified law 11-3-6. And this would give permission to the Community and Economic Development Director or a city designee as part of this memorandum. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know if Ross or Amy, if either one of you want to briefly walk the commission and others through exactly what we're talking about.
I'll go ahead and tackle that one. So developers currently have to go through a rather cumbersome process to have Platts approved, but many of our Platts are sort of ministerial in nature in that when you have a development that's already come before the commission, or just moving lot lines or plating just one more lot in the development as it builds out. Picture, you know, West City Limits developments and things of that nature. This speeds up the process for the developers by allowing those Platts to be handled in the community development office. So it takes some of the load off of you guys when it's clearly not controversial and allows developers to move more quickly.
Now, Ross, I do believe, should there be a decision made or not made in support or against any what you might consider a standard plot review, if somebody would have an issue with that, that still could come before the city commission, correct?
That would be correct.
Is there any other discussion from the city commission? All right, would anybody in the public like to comment on this? Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybomb.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 21-150 regarding an engineering agreement with Stockwell Engineers for a survey and site design and services and drainage improvement on 18 acres of city-owned property north of 33rd Avenue between Broadway and Douglas to not exceed $27,810. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dave has moved to the mic. Dave, would you like to walk the commission through what this is?
This item is somewhat tied to the next agenda item also. This is the property north of Menards, where you've seen dirt coming and going. It's kind of a, we've used it a little bit as a borrow pit area, tried to build it up to prep it for future development. The city owns the property, so in this case, it's one of the few instances where the city is actually the developer and responsible for stormwater management facilities, the design of and construction of eventually stormwater management facilities, potentially some other infrastructure on the site. And being the responsible developer that the city, of course, you know, hopes to be, this is the first step in getting that taken care of, just to get the site shovel-ready eventually for people to develop.
Any other questions for Dave? Seeing not anybody in the public want to make comment. All right, Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-152 regarding offer to purchase property in Airport Edition north of 33rd Street, again, which is along Douglas, north of Menards to Yankton Thrive on behalf of a third party. And this is for the total of $59,892. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dave, anything to add here? I know we talked a little bit about what it is upfront, in the previous agenda item.
Sure. It's 1.44 acres out of the approximate 18-acre site that would be provided through Yankton Thrive to a third-party developer as defined in South Dakota codified law. The price is approximately, well, it is $50,000 an acre, $1.15 a square foot. We did a fairly significant amount of research working through coming to that number, and it does represent the market for several other lot sales that have occurred recently in the area. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have about the transfer.
This be for a distribution center?
Correct. Yep, that's the part of it that we're able to discuss, is for a small distribution center.
Any other questions from the commission? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three under new business is a bid award in consideration of memorandum 21-151 regarding a bid award for the 2021 Active Transportation Project, and that is for sidewalks east of the middle school to complete the missing portion of the sidewalk along the north side of the 20th Street, the west side of Burley Street, and the south side of 21st Street to Masonry Components for a total of $116,069, which is a little over $25,000 less than the expected total of the project. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this?
There's quite a discrepancy between the, or difference, I should say, between the top and the lowest bid, and it came in quite a bit lower than the estimate. Is there, I mean, is there a reason why we feel it came in that much lower?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, other than...
That's good.
Yeah. You know, when it's going our way, we don't ask as many questions, but no, I don't, you know, it could be crews, it could be getting workers. I'm not exactly sure, but we were pleased with the low bid.
I'm just excited to see another Active Transportation Project because as I walk around the community, it's just frustrating that there's so many places without sidewalks, so I'm glad that we are proactively taking care of that issue. So appreciate staff helping make sure that happens.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Johnson. It is good, especially when you look at where it's located around the middle school with a lot of youth. I know in that area daily walking to school, walking to use the pool and things like that, so to be able to have safe environments for people to be able to walk in the Boys and Girls Club and things like that. So a great area to keep working on that Active Transportation Project, for sure. Any other comments, questions from the commission? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
So a great area to keep working on that Active Transportation Project, for sure. Any other comments, questions from the commission? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. We're under, we're to other business, we do not have anything under other business, and I keep flipping to think I didn't print off enough pages, and yet, we are to the end. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the City Commission meeting of July 12.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? And anybody abstaining? All right, with that, the City Commission meeting of July 12 is adjourned.